I just filled in my gaps and I'll send it off.
I call this regular meeting of the Nevada City Council to order Monday, May 24th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Can we get a roll call, please?
Here.
Jay Nielsen.
Here.
Stay here. Here.
Here.
Here.
And then Brian did let us know he was unable to make it tonight, which takes us into approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jason, Dane, any discussion on the agenda? None, council, please vote. Agenda is approved, which takes us into public hearings. The first one is FY 2021 Budget Amendment Number Two, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing there. Karen, did you receive any comments? And is there anyone here to speak in the public hearing regarding the budget amendment? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, move to Resolution Number 106, 2020, 2021. Resolution approving the FY 2020, 21 Budget Amendment Number Two.
Move to approve.
Second.
Luke and Barb. Okay. Everybody wanted that one.
Bargo.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote. Is approved, takes us to public hearing B, Proposed Development Agreement with M&R Properties Iowa LLC. We will go ahead and open up that public hearing. Karen, did we receive any comment? No comments received. So anyone here to speak in the public hearing? And then we'll close that public hearing. And then it doesn't have a resolution on there. Are we taking action or is it just the hearing? Okay. Okay, so this just satisfies the hearing and there will be action in the future. Okay, and that moves us out of public hearings. Under the consent agenda, any item may be removed for separate consideration.
Move to approve.
Second.
Luke and Sandy, discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote. That is approved, takes us into the public forum, which is time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. And first, we have a probationary volunteer firefighter to be sworn in, so I believe Director Reynolds will probably come forward and do a little introduction.
This is always a great time when we get to put new people on and Zach has really proven himself to be quite an asset to our fire department. I'd like to read the paragraph that we require them to submit to us. So Zach was born and raised in Nevada. He's a senior at Nevada and will be graduating and then going to Northeast Iowa Community College in Kalmar to join the John Deere Technician Program. He works at Van Wall here in Nevada for about a year now and he'll continue to work there through the summer and after school. He is an Eagle Scout through the troop in Nevada and he learned a lot through his years as Boy Scouts. His future goals are to stay in Nevada after school and continue working at Van Wall. He may move around a little bit with the family farm and his dad farms in the Maxwell area. So with that, I just wanted to say we originally were going to put Zach on as a rehab tech because he knew he was taking this collegiate-type program and we'd be missing him for a few months, but he made no bones about being a hard worker, wanted to take on a lot more. You may have seen the ladder truck out yesterday. He was learning how to throw ladders and stuff. And so he's taken quite an initiative that caught a lot of our officers' attention and they said, let's just put him on as a firefighter and we'll get through the months that he's gone and come back and train him back up. But with that, I give you thanks. Zach Larson. You can step up there.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Zach Larson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the City Code of Nevada, Iowa.
And the City Code of Nevada, Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the office.
Discharge all the duties of the office.
As a volunteer firefighter.
A volunteer firefighter.
For the City of Nevada, Iowa.
For the City of Nevada, Iowa.
As now or after required by law.
As now here or thereafter required by law.
Newest firefighter, congratulations. And that continues on in the public forum and we do have Emily here to introduce herself from Congressman Feenster's office.
Hello, my name is Emily Swickerath and I am Congressman Randy Feenstra's District Director. I live in Ames but am originally from New Hampton, which is still in the 4th District but up in Northeast Iowa. Congressman Feenstra was just sworn in in January and he serves on three different committees. The Agriculture Committee, Space Science and Technology Committee, and the Budget Committee. And it's my job to go and be his eyes and ears on the ground when he's out in DC or traveling. So just wanted to come and introduce myself tonight and let you guys know that our office is truly here to help in any way we can. The congressman was a city administrator, a county treasurer, and before he was elected to Congress, so he has a pretty special place in his heart for local government. And you guys are the people who really make the hard decisions and where the rubber meets the road. So please reach out to our office anytime and Brett has my contact information, but I'll make sure to get my cards out as well. But thank you for allowing me to speak too.
Thank you. So that, we're still in the public forum. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak in the public forum? We'll close the public forum, move to old business. There's old business A, Ordinance Number 1017, 2020, 2021. An ordinance amending the City Code of Nevada, Iowa by adding Chapter 114, Electric Transmission Franchise with ITC Midwest LLC. Third reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jason, Sandy, discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote. That is approved, takes us to item B, Approved Change Order Number Five for the Central Business District Infrastructure Project. Construct Incorporated in the amount of $14,604.89.
Move to approve.
Second.
Barb, Luke, discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote. That is approved, takes us to item C, Discussion Appropriate Follow-Up on COVID-19 Pandemic Policies. And you see the previous resolution in, or you see the resolution that it would repeal the face mask policy and amend the COVID-19 policy, which then takes us into that discussion. And then Erin, on this, I did have some comment, which I should have sent you ahead of time. Some of the guidelines in here are continuing to change on things like quarantines and things like that. Should we simplify it and just reference CDC so we don't have to keep changing this?
You sure can. So originally, we wanted to bring this back because, of course, the CDC changed the recommendation for mask wearing. And so we wanted to bring it back. Well, then, we had the Iowa Legislature step in last week, late last week, with some new language with regards to the city adopting any resolution or ordinance that requires the owner of real property to implement a policy relating to the use of face coverings. I don't know if it was the intent that all city property would then not be able to require face coverings, but I think by the language that was adopted, that is the practical effect of what was implemented. So we were just trying to get this in front of you guys so that you can have a look at it. If there's other things you want to change, you can certainly consider that now. But with the requirement that face coverings be worn, that is certainly something that we need to step back from at this point.
Does this include the public library?
Well, it's city-owned property.
Well, but they have their own separate. We own the property.
They do, but as I understand it, the city owns that property.
Okay.
I did get an email from Luke earlier today. Instead of just redacting all of it with regards to face coverings, if the city could just make a recommendation and encourage patrons and employees to continue wearing face coverings. And I certainly think that is an option for the city to consider.
For that, I was looking on page 69, the very first bullet point that is crossed out, instead of saying face masks are required, saying they are recommended. And maybe even a caveat at the end of that sentence that stipulates for those who have not been vaccinated yet, which is, I believe, in line with CDC guidance.
Correct.
I think recommending for unvaccinated folks would be a reasonable midpoint.
It was part of my concern with the library, especially as summer's coming, that many of the patrons, summer patrons of the library don't even have access because they're not yet 12. But they're, but they kind of camp out at the library and I know the library's preparing summer programming to meet them, to encourage them to come. Can they, can they recommend for those that are unvaccinated? Because that would be in line with CDC.
Yeah, I think with Luke's language, that would allow that.
I think we can always recommend, we just can't require anymore.
That's correct. Yep. So and you've got two, Karen and I were putting this together and we kind of put two things in one. So what you have is the COVID-19 policy that was actually adapted by resolution of the council. And so that's why we've got the repealer language in resolution form. The face mask policy, as I understand it, Mayor put into effect pursuant to the emergency resolution that the city has on the books with regards to COVID-19 policies. Is that correct, Mayor?
Yeah, I think so. I don't know if council ever confirmed it, but we originally did it to the
Right.
Emergency powers.
Looks like it's dated November 12th.
And that was right when the governor had been changing the emergency declaration to state because the numbers were moving. I don't know if we want to get into it tonight, but I do think we should clean up the more quarantine slash exposure language that has since changed, particularly for vaccinated individuals. Because if they're exposed and vaccinated, it's no longer recommended to require the quarantine.
Yeah.
It always be something that comes back.
Well, the urgent thing for tonight is the consideration of the facial coverings. And so I would recommend that the council take action on that piece of it this evening. And then if there's other things that we want to simplify and just reference CDC as it changes, we can certainly do that.
Well, I like the way that we've described it over here with the recommendation of wearing the face mask if you're not vaccinated.
So is that a motion to
For something like that?
What's that?
All right, do you need a motion for something like that?
Yes.
To make a motion to approve it with ex-change.
Talking about the current policy that we have here.
So we're looking for, let me pull up my other screen here. It is, so it's currently under, let's see, Resolution Number 109. So we'd be looking for a motion to approve Resolution Number 109, 2020, 2021. A resolution approving the face mask policy and amending the COVID-19 policy to include Luke suggested change of face coverings or face masks are recommended when in the hallways, kitchen, and other common areas, when social distancing is not possible and the individual has not been vaccinated.
You want me to repeat what you just said?
I don't need you to do that, if that is your motion.
I'll move to approve what the mayor just stated.
Okay.
First that.
Do you have a motion from Luke?
I'll second it.
Second by Sandy, further discussion. Okay, seeing none, council, please vote.
Is it the will of the council? Let me wait till this is.
We don't, we haven't seen lights yet.
Is it the, is it the will of the council to have it come back with some additional streamlining as well?
Yes.
Yes, 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 yes. Okay.
And so that moves us on to new business. There's Resolution Number 110, 2020, 2021. A resolution approving master agreement for online payment and processing application development and website services with NIC Iowa for the City of Nevada, Parks and Recreation concessions, and authorize the city clerk to electronically sign the documents.
Move to approve.
Second. Jason and Dane, discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote. And that is approved, takes us to new business B, Approved Special Class C Five-Day Liquor License for Story County 4-H Fair Association, 220 H Avenue, effective June 16th, 2021 to June 21st, 2021.
Move to approve. Second.
Dane, Luke, discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote. And that is approved, which takes us to approving new application for 2021 Garbage Waste Hauler License for Jerry Sanitation. Barb?
Second.
Luke, further discussion?
It's a new business in town or new to Nevada or new?
Concession, for the concessions, you're saying?
The sanitation, the Jerry sanitation.
Oh, I do not know about, I don't know about this, the Jerry sanitation.
Paperwork said it was a new
Zering.
Application.
Ground is zering.
Okay. So new to town, but not new to
Yeah.
The job.
Two trucks.
Did we have a motion, Erin?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, council, please vote. That is approved, takes us into reports, starting with city administrator.
I just, I was gonna remind the mayor to, or ask the mayor if he was going to bring up the workshop for a meeting some, or after some
Oh, yes.
Meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Other than that, you guys have my report. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Okay. Then moving on, what Jordan was alluding to, the workshop we were doing with him. The doodle poll didn't identify a time that would work for all seven of us. So I suggested we do it after one of the June council meetings and try to just make sure we keep that agenda light, as light as we can. So does anyone have a preference between the two June dates?
Earlier the better. Like, I would prefer the first one, if possible.
The 14th?
June 14th.
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
Okay, getting heads nodding, so we'll plan for June 14th and hopefully that works for Brian. Okay. Otherwise, the focus groups for Vision 2020 were last week and I think those got some good feedback from the reports. I heard from those that were in attendance or have spoken with the facilitators. So that about finishes up our public input phase of the Vision 2040. So now we're kind of wading through all of, all of what was collected and bringing the big group back together that hasn't met in a little while. So we'll keep everybody updated on that. I've had, I've had multiple requests for coffee with the council to resume in person. So we tried to do that with the open house last month, but they're wanting more of the chit-chat-y type thing. So I was going to see if anyone was available to do that for June.
Be a second.
The second.
The attendance would have been June 12th, but obviously it's been a year and a half, so we can do something different if we need to.
I could do that.
I could do the 12th.
Okay, sounds good. So we'll go ahead and plan on June 12th. The more the mayor can, Karen can always notice it, if more folks than want to show up too. So it sounds like we had at least two. Yeah, we don't need a dime.
I've got a graduation.
Doing farm grounds again, or?
Probably. Reach out to Evy.
Yeah.
Okay, and then I'll, and then I'm sure Marlis is listening, so she'll make sure we get something publicized.
Nine o'clock?
Yep. Hey, otherwise, the only other question I had was at some point if we want to think about these dividers and when we think those are appropriate to come down so we can hear each other better. So I'm starting thinking about that. You don't have to decide it today.
Anybody not vaccinated here?
I'm sorry, what?
Anybody not vaccinated? Think we're all vaccinated, so I'd be okay with it.
Okay, seeing some nods, so everybody okay if staff room moves on when they have time? Okay. Sounds good. It'll be weird without our cages.
I'll have to be polite.
Okay, then, yeah, those were, that's everything I wrote down, so we went to council reports.
We had a concert in town a couple days ago. It was really good. British United Nevada, J.C.'s. I wish Brian was here so I could thank him personally for supplying the stage, but it was a great event. Probably between the race and the concert, we had about 300 people involved. A lot of great things I've heard. We had people come from as far as Missouri and Minnesota for the concert. So it was a good showing for the City of Nevada and I think that we should look at having more events like this in the future, for sure.
Other reports?
It shows there, June 22nd, we had all seven of us clicked at 6 to 8:00 PM in the doodle.
I'm gone.
Well, then, why did you click it?
I didn't do the, I don't think I did the poll at all. Karen just told me what the results looked like.
Oh.
Oh, he was asking about June 22nd and I said I was gone on vacation.
Got you. So you didn't participate? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, other reports? Okay, and we'll go back to Public Works. It's like Jeremy's ready to go.
I don't have much to say. It's just business as usual, patching streets, pouring concrete back, getting the water breaks done. Wastewater plants on schedule. Downtown's going along pretty good, so I don't, I don't have anything else. Anybody got any questions?
Council, anything for Jeremy? Thanks, Jeremy. Park and Rec, Mr. Hanson?
I don't have much either, other than we're going to start some staff training for our pool staff tomorrow. We'll do that a little bit this week, early next week, and anticipation of getting that open next week and rest of this week is just kind of dressing things up for Memorial Day. So any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks.
Public Safety?
I don't have anything. Do you have any questions for me? I'm tired of talking about hiring, so I'm not going to talk about it.
But you've had some applicants, so that's positive.
Yeah. We've had some applicants.
Council, anything for Rick? Thanks, Rick. Larry?
That's interesting. You receive the monthly report on all the projects that we have going on in Nevada. And if you've got any questions on those, you can ask me. Mike Roth is also on the, on Zoom, so if you have any questions in regard to any of the wastewater projects, he'd be happy to address those. Couple of things that are going on. One, the West F Avenue subdivision, which is where OnTrax new facility will be built. We're going to have a walkthrough, all of the infrastructure improvements that have been made there. And we'll be having a walkthrough on that project this week. I did take a trip out to South Glam this afternoon and everything is looking really, really good out there. All the paving, all the sidewalk is in and so should be some backfilling going in. I think the lots are about ready to be sold and built, huh? So that looks, that looks really good. We've been working on the USDA Site Plan and Drainage Report. They're going to be building a new building out on faucet, Parkway across from Score Park. And it's been kind of a struggle. We've got a number of renditions of the site plan and drainage report, but happy to report those were approved last week. So I assume they will, they may be breaking ground this week, so I'm assuming the permits are issued, so.
I did tell you that they were approved, yeah.
A bit of bad news, Casey Patton, who was going to be replacing me up here eventually, submitted his resignation about a week and a half ago. So the really bad news is you're going to have to contend with me a bit longer, so. So it'll be business as usual, but we'll have to try to find a replacement for Casey somewhere down the road. But I'm in no big hurry to leave you folks, so it'll be fine. With that, if you've got any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Do you have Mike on mine? Mike, do you have anything to provide to council?
I just wanted to mention that we do have a 60% design review workshop scheduled for this Wednesday afternoon on the lift station part of the wastewater plant project. But other than that, I have nothing further unless you have any questions for me regarding the wastewater plant project.
Anything for Mike? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
From you, Karen?
I'm on vacation next week. I also had a call this last Friday from the auditors. The audit was supposed to be done by June 1st. I'm not sure. Hope you guys saw the new tax bill with the tip reduction. We are on the four-year sliding scale. Looks like the first year will be $7,000 and then it goes down to $8,300 and then $55,000 and then $27,000.
And that was for the backfill, Karen? It's only a matter of time.
Get it filled those houses, huh?
Okay, council, anything for Karen? Erin?
Nothing for me.
Okay, council, anything else before we adjourn?
Move to adjourn. Move to adjourn.
Jason, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You opposed, say nay. Adjourn, another quick one.